Hey, I don't want to, not take little advice. Mr. Work, would you leave us some prayer, please, if we want to stand?
That's all, sir. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this good evening, and bless our lives, and watch over us another day, for Jesus. Dear heavenly Father, teach, guide, and correct us, dear heavenly Father, in ways that help us go. Dear heavenly Father, bless our country, for Jesus has the ones in sin, or in need. Dear heavenly Father, give us the knowledge and understanding to make the best decisions, to seek Lord. Dear heavenly Father, bless our first responders, and our soldiers who are seen, dear heavenly Father. Go with them, for Jesus. Dear heavenly Father, bless, dear heavenly Father, our children. Keep an edge built upon them, for Jesus is a protector, dear heavenly Father. Thank you for all that you do in our life, dear heavenly Jesus, and most of all, for the plan of salvation. Amen.
Amen. So, stand and pray. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord. The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Carl, is there?
Here.
Lynn, here?
Here.
Robert, Bruce?
Here.
Rob, David?
Here.
Whit, going? Barbara, Megham, Odom?
Here.
Kevin, Eath?
Here.
Scott, Pitts?
Here.
Lip, Pullmire?
Here.
Lee, the Lifter?
Robert, Marlon?
Here.
Soon, Niamh? Garcia, Ork?
Here.
Scott, Stambler?
May we add?
Ten, ten presenters for us.
I'd like to state that we have ten commissioners, and we do have them just for a forum. Before we get started, folks, Glennis, would you like to come forward, please?
Yeah. I'll keep my social distance here.
You're fine.
I'd just like to tell the county commissioners that after 23 years with Willoughby County, I have a brand-new patrol unit sitting out there in the parking lot with Campbell County's name on it. And thanks to you guys, I have got that brand-new patrol unit. I'd like to give a shout-out to Grapevine Ford for helping us. A big shout-out to Sandy's Custom Auto. A shout-out to one of my commissioner buddies up there, Mr. Ork, for helping to do all this thing. And to each and every one of you guys, I appreciate it a lot. Thank you, patrol unit.
Bruce, any commissioners coming in, if you so.
Yeah, I can say, Glennis, I appreciate you. You've actually changed the whole county from what you've done with Bruce. You've got a beautiful place. And I know, Glennis, I've come more acquainted with him since I've been on the mission. But I've never seen somebody that deserved or to do his job, I guess. And as we've seen, as I've seen, the money's set available. We talk every, every once in a while, me and Glennis will run across to each other on the road, or we'll talk, and just talk about his video. And I'm glad that you all fell right in, and everyone of us, it was so easy. I mean, I brought many a different bunch of men to stand here, and got to throw that back out the door, and throw it in my face. But that was one, which is awesome to do. And I just hope you're available, and stay good, and you can do it for another third year.
And we're going to. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
First things first, I went out to survey, litter citation, and I ended up, I had Commissioner Davis call me yesterday about a crashed-up place in Delco. And I went to that this morning, and after taking care of that, with his chief salesman at Delco, we actually done three more over at Delco today, and that truck is currently leased today. So, thank you a lot.
Mr. Kim?
Glennis, on behalf of the second district in Iowa Campbell County, we appreciate all the hard work that you do for the county. All I can say is just keep up the good work, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I would like to, uh, take a couple of minutes, uh, Glenn, so, uh, definitely get a hand up if you could. But, uh, back several years ago, when everybody was cleaning up the Gillette Civil War cemetery. I, when I was a kid, I knowed up in the yard from, from I'd say a bird's- but then, there were others down the road walking. And one of the places that I knowed was Bob Gillette. And he had the cemetery out behind there. And it was Paul grown up. And one day after I finished knowing, he gave me a coat, and he says, I'll show you some. So, we go in there, and in the back of that cemetery, Brian Mill, right? And he says, I want you to remember this. He said, there aren't many people know this. And one, these two graves that were in there, it was really grown up around it. He said, you see those two graves there? He said, those are witch's graves. And he looked at it, and said, both of them had the name Emmeline Carter, side by side. And what happened was, he said, when the first one died, they got a new stuff, and, and put Emmeline's name on Edeline's grave. And Edeline died, they just put their name on it, and nobody ever changed it. Well, it was really grown up there. So, but Glennis was cleaning it up. Uh, they learned that there were Civil War soldiers there. He told me that, but he didn't know if they were from north or south. Glennis is going up there, cleaning it up, and it took a long time to do it. And he was kind of going toward the mill where those were. And I was up there, and I told him, I said, you better watch out when you get over there, those are witch's graves over there. Well, uh, he had some trustees up there that were doing it. They kept getting closer and closer. They hadn't used hand tools because it was so, so grown up. And the day that, uh, they were getting ready to get to that point, he pointed out those graves, and he says, now, you better watch out when you get over there, those are witch's graves there. He said, they just cussed, you know, there ain't no such thing as no doubt witches. He said, well, you just better be careful when you get there, remember one thing. He said, they get over there, and this one had a hand seal. And he was right at the butt of this grave, and he barely had to attempt to burst it swinging. And there was a nest of ground points that came out of there. I just received it, and buried it now. And he just said, and did something like that. And Glennis called me, and told me what happened, and he says, I'm sure that we're going to get to it over there. And he says, what, what are we going to do? And I said, the only thing I know we can do is to claim that it's an act of God. But a year went by, and nobody found a city. But they stowed, what was it, over a hundred towns?
Over a hundred towns, yeah. One day, I attempted to write a book. Oh, that's the cemetery. So, there's a lot of strange things happening in that cemetery. And his mother, Alice, Cochrane, she's working for that, and she's the one called me on that cemetery. Took us right out in two years to cut the cemetery out. About doing it two days a week for two years. And right now, if you look above the station down there, the exhaust station, you can see where the Harper's is at right now, you'll see those flags flying up on top of it. And we are proud of that. Again. Hundred fifty-two compared to so many, pretty much. And one to a billion. And then on the other end is the Harper family and the Gillette family. And we actually had a Civil War dedication for that back in 2005. And, uh, proud of that cemetery.
Again, Glennis, thank you very much for the hard work that you do.
Thank you.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chris, too. All right, guys, moving on, uh, the next order of business is, it's kind of a sad business, but we have to do it. Guys, we have a vacancy in the fifth district. Carl Douglas, a good friend of ours, passed away, and saying that we've got to fill his seat. Uh, Mr. Coker, we've already run it, we've run it in the volunteer times, and I think in the local media, W A M?
Delco.
Delco, ran it.
Hundred dollars a week, something like that.
And, um, we were looking to possibly fill that seat next Monday night, if that's okay.
I, I had sent an email here earlier to explain the process. And it's fairly short and direct, but I can just, just read it here. These are the steps. Number one, the vacancy must be filled within 120 days of receiving notice of the vacancy, unless during that time during the general election. The presiding officer, that's the chairperson of the county commission, shall cause public notice to be given in the newspaper at least seven days prior to meeting at which the office is to be filled, or resolution. The chair shall allow registered voters of the county an opportunity to submit names to the county commission for consideration. Names may be, um, uh, submitted in writing to the chair prior to the meeting, or may be submitted in person at the meeting. In order for a name to be considered, a member of the legislative body must nominate the person. That nomination has to come from one of you. County commissioners may also nominate a candidate or candidate to fill the vacancy without the name being submitted by a vote. Nominations do not require a second. If the person nominated is, is not present at the meeting, the person making the nomination shall submit a signed statement from the nominee that the nominee is willing to serve, if appointed. Number four, after the nomination ceased, the county commission may discuss the nominations, and may, at the discretion of the chair, interview nominees or about nominees of opportunity to address the county commission. Upon motion passed by the majority of the members, the votes to make the appointment may be postponed to a subsequent meeting, provided that adequate public notice is given in accordance with the open meeting law. Number five, to receive an appointment, a nominee must receive the minimum votes of the majority of the members of the county legislative body eligible to vote on the appointment. County legislative bodies shall adopt rules of procedure for eliminated nominees where there are multiple nominees, and no nominee receives a majority of the votes after the initial voting. A tie vote may be broken in the same manner for this other tie vote, in this case, that will be the number. A, uh, tie vote, uh, in other words, the first nominee to get the majority of votes of the entire membership of the county commission is elected as the replacement commission, and the voting stops at that point. When a vacancy is filled, that county commissioner shall fill the vacancy in accordance with the deadline, uh, in 120 days, which you have to do. the deadline, uh, in a hundred and twenty days, which you have to do. The one who is not vetted until the new county commissioner attempts to acquire oath of office, and the appointment is valid and fill a successor elected to give an exit general election. So that's, that's the process that you go through to fill a vacant county commission seat. It's the same as you would go through for any other, uh, uh, elected official in the county, so.
Well, in saying that, Joe, we've, we've ran it on the, indeed, the media, on, on radio, and I think on volunteer times, which is an internet paper, but yet it's considered a local paper.
Yes, that'd be sufficient.
That would be sufficient. Okay. Um, in saying that, then next Monday night, can we entertain a motion? You know?
As long as there's adequate public notice, I think they're going to do that, yes. There'll be five days motion.
Sure. Now, criteria that we normally use, Joe, and I know you're affiliated with it because we got this, two different ones at the time we came in, but normally, and we'll set those procedures, I guess, upfront before we do all the ex-rates.
Right.
And I think normally, is, is we take nominations, it don't have to have a second. And usually, we set it by the first nominations, it's probably don't first. The first one with eight votes is got to sit.
That's right.
So we need to set that procedure in place Monday night before we vote. Which direction we're going to try? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Does he understand? Zach? Is that good? Like I said, I just want to make sure, I, I feel like we've done it adequately as far as putting it in the paper and letting everyone know that he, I did rest it, because it's my understanding that we've had some people that aren't even in the fifth district that are calling, some people we told that has to come out of the fifth district.
They would have to be eligible to serve.
Yes.
I think Zach is correct, that, that at the last time this occurred, we established this procedure.
Yes.
If there's any doubt about that, you still already established.
Yeah, well, then, I'm reading what I was saying. In the event of the vacancy of constitutional county office following election procedure after the latest, it's important to tend to find out if you actually made the call by the county commission. Had a whole meeting of the county, Campbell County Board of Commissioners, the chairman wants the office to be filled, and ask members of the public in attendance, if anyone can bring himself or herself as a candidate. The county commission part of the bill will report on the next amendment's agreement. The commission chairman would then ask for nominations from the four members of the public in attendance. After candidates have been nominated, the chairman will start the party to call the board and land them under the most order of asking the commissioner to give the candidate a shot.
Hold it right there, I'll just say. You didn't say anything about a county commissioner nominating?
It must be a county commissioner to nominate the nomination.
Okay, so is that what you're saying? This is in our polls, in the county information.
Yes. Well, you can't have a rule that would be, uh, come through with state law.
I understand, Joe, that's state law, it's what you read, state law.
Yeah, that's, that's the state law.
So, even though we might have several people nominated in the audience, they still have to be nominated by a commissioner to be able to be voted on, correct?
That's Tennessee COVID-19 data five-five-one level.
Zach? You good with that? Okay, alright, what's that? Randy, what's that? Okay, who has it? Yeah, I mean, in the past, I understand, you said we announce who to vote for, but in the past, the procedure that I've always seen that, and I'm sure Johnny and Joe, once we've been through a few of them, is the first nomination, and you could say the last nomination. We could do it like Zach, but I always liked the way that's been done since I've been here, and I'm sure that's, that's our rules, but that procedure was followed numerous times, school board members, mayors, road superintendents, uh, I mean, I guess we need to set that procedure, I guess talk about it tonight during our, our agenda bill, and kind of make a decision which route we're going to go, we don't need to dabble all night Monday night and set the procedures, it needs to be set in stone. We're going to have it ready to go come Monday night. Okay. Here's what I'd like to do Monday night, guys, after we've done the, uh, the prayer and the pledge and roll call, I'd like to open the floor, you know, let everybody know that we are filling the vacancy of a fifth district commissioner, and I would accept any nominees from the audience. Okay?
You would accept suggestions?
Suggestions.
But I'm, I'm only a commissioner connected to nomination.
Yeah, I understand, that's what I was going to say. Say, for example, if, if Joe stands up and said, I'd like to be considered for the position, and give him a couple minutes to speak, then I'll have to ask a commissioner, if anybody wants to nominate Mr. Coker. Is that correct?
That'd be, that would be a problem.
Okay.
You can set whatever riddle you want, how you want the vote in one word, that's, those riddles are, you establish those, as long as they're not contrary to state law.
And, uh, what I'd like to do after I've done that, then, I'll ask the commissioners, you know, hey, guys, these are the ground rules that we set last Monday night at a workshop on this procedure. Am I good with that? As long as we got a procedure to follow, we don't need to come and try and.
You think terribly, right?
I was just saying, maybe you have any questions? No.
So you're telling this body, Mr. Chairman, we're going to have all our ducks in the road, ready to proceed with the nomination.
Yes, sir, you better believe.
Thank you.
Ralph?
Mr. Cooper, is there any reason why we can't swap in the person? You can have, you can have that person, uh, take it over that night, and if you have a bond example here, you know, uh, to, to get the bond, then you the proper to have that person sent off.
Mr. Coker, speaking of bond, I called, uh, Jonathan Finley last week, spoke to Jonathan, county commissioners are not bonded.
Well, then you don't have a bond.
Yeah, that's what he told me, I, I thought we did too.
I, I did.
He said that county commissioners were not bonded, that we fell under the general liability insurance coverage. So perhaps if, uh, whoever we nominate and appoint, if we can swap them in that night, they can actually start voting that night, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions?
Do.
Go ahead.
I mean, I've got somebody, you know, that I'm going to nominate.
I understand.
I've had a contact, but I, I just be straight with him, tell him, you know, I'm nominating. But I'm just going to say, uh, is, I've already got somebody I know that I'm going to nominate, the Congress has jumped up.
I understand that, but like I said, we've got open to the.
Right, yeah, I understand that, that's fine. I would go for a procedure, but I'm just saying that, uh, if anybody wants, no, I've got someone, uh, I'm just.
And, and, and to be honest with you, this is my opinion, I think that the fifth district commissioners should be the one to, you know, to make that nomination, because, yes. Joe, is that procedure okay?
Yes.
Okay, I agree, and we'll talk about it in a few minutes, when we get to our agenda items and stuff, and I, best y'all couldn't put it online, that way.
It don't matter, as long as we got a procedure that we don't come in and try.
Correct. Okay, go. Mallory, I want you to please, list those, pay for me, that way I can have them. Um, okay, moving on now. Approval of previous amendments, guys, a couple of those, no republic applications for approval, uh, committee reports in minutes, guys, we have a bunch of them and everything. Um, approved budget amendments and other funding resolutions, those are the ones that went over tonight. Uh, remember, we're doing the three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar capital outlay no Monday night, you know, for the, for our building or anything, putting on. Uh, also, um, on the monthly travel credit card.
Chairman, there is a charge there. I was scheduled to go to Tennessee Mining Association.
Yes.
But the health department said, you're not going after a schedule, but at the time of scheduling, I was okay to go. So maybe, I think there's a fifty-four cent interest for our guy.
I got you. But that's the whole thing on your part?
The fifty dollars, yeah.
And that was something you couldn't get back?
No.
Okay, no, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, did you ask for it back, I mean, did you ask for the, okay?
The, the registration for everybody else was three hundred and fifty dollars, but remember that fifty dollars, I did ask for it back, but.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Kid, once you reached a certain period, you, you said with a probably seven, two-hour time limit, they would give it back to you.
I was just making sure.
So the county bills, did you give more sense of fifty?
It's fifty-four, added interest, I tried to get them paid off, can't get them paid off.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
I know we don't trust the mayor to pay.
Okay. Reports from county officials and all departments of the Department of Education, uh, we have those in there. Uh, reports from organizations receiving funding from the county, uh, we have those. And this is, uh, information only, and other matters, I think, the nine-one-one members appointment, uh, maybe you have, are you appointing someone to the nine-one-one board?
Uh, talking with Mr. Hudson, we do need to, uh, go back and cover three seats, like a quarter.
You'll, you'll bring it up in the December meeting then?
I will.
Okay. Is it going to follow the guidelines that were put up the state?
That's what I always said, the blame in any terms.
I guess you've done, looked through that.
I have not.
Because there's a term on each one of those seats.
Oh, yes, uh, that, that was several years ago, we spent a great deal of time trying to reconstruct those term ended plan, and we finally got it.
Remember, Mr. Coker? Okay, uh, also renaming a portion of the Staking Creek Road, Ralph, would you explain to the condition what's, what's going to be done there?
Yes, Juan Deback contacted me, and he wants our blessings, uh, go under one mile dedication, rename it into, um, Carl Douglas. It's going to be on Carl Douglas Memorial Highway, and it's going to be in front of the Stanfield Church, you got the new building, and, uh, but Deback just wanted our blessings and let us know that that's what it was, is going to be open. I'll have it in writing Monday night.
Um, also, the twenty-twenty-one public library maintenance prepared for agreement, maybe you have that, you have that one?
It's, it's a standard form of, we get from the library all the way to here.
Okay. Uh, amendment to Rule Ten of operating procedures. Okay, Zach. Uh, maybe you have four?
I don't have anything for agenda, just information, uh, the Brownfields Grant House case went down on time, so we're hopeful about that, and the application, uh, the project is the RJ Foreman Railroad. Whether it gets an investor who wants to build an excursion railroad there, or whether the rail gets taken up, you can at least use it to pave one, so either way it goes, Service Transportation Board under the US Department of Transportation is hearing and feel right now by these excursion railroad companies, we should know in the next month whether it's going to be excursion railroad or whether all the rails come out. So, the down portion Campbell County is affected, about eight mile stretch from Norma, coming through by County Bridge back into Anderson County, so right along the river over there,
So, yeah, that's beautiful water, but that would be a beautiful train, right?
It is, it is, uh, you even got the old water tank, no steam, and it's still sitting there on the side of the river.
Actually, a train that's actually down the water, West El Wash, they used to use on it, a few years back, and it's been strolled, which is in, that's Anderson County, and it's, a lot of people makes that trip, just go sleep over there.
Well, that's the end of the line for a co-water, so it would be from O'Nah down the very back.
So, Mr. Kid, you have?
Well, I want to let him finish his portion, and if it's, uh, any reason, I want to ask him a few questions, or you want me to do it when I'm recognized?
I'm recognizing that.
Alright. Mayor, um, you're aware.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, is it the deal that he's talking about now?
No, I'd like to, I'd probably best to put on my agenda to talk to him. Don't you agree?
That'll be fine.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, maybe.
Chamber received, uh, forty-four thousand, six hundred dollar Safe Tourism Promotion Grant, and we put that in motion through the Chamber Board this week. Uh, last week, we're going on Miss Attic, the new Chamber Director, and she'll be here to talk to you, and ninety-hundred and twenty days, once you get your feet on the ground, I think she's going to be real good. Um, Tennessee Vacation Guide contract went out, so we're back in it, uh, we're back in the places we need to be, so. And Tennessee Magazine is published by the utilities across the state, and they send it out to their customers, and there's going to be a really nice article out here, came up, arrived by our traction, so we've got the December issue coming in, so. Good message throughout Campbell County. That's all I have.
Okay. Uh, now, recognizing commissioners introducing resolutions and proposals for debate, this orgastically called reverse order, uh, someone saying that. Wait back, 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 third lady. Yes, I was just saying. Sorry about that. Mallory, do you have that?
Ah, very good. Uh, Mr. Stanfield isn't here, and I don't think he had anything to add, correct, Ralph?
Uh, yeah.
Go ahead.
On the joke meeting, I think he was one of the, asked on joke meeting to approve the, uh, bids and rootprints, ensure sign of petition, and, and he, they went through sanitation acts, or sort of building, joke meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Do you have it, Mallory? Scott Stanfield, joke committee, okay. Mr. Ork?
Mr. Bruce, Mr. Chairman. Uh, what I have, actually, I attended a Zoom meeting for the redistricting for the state, and they had about a two-hour meeting the other day, but, uh, one thing, it brought back a lot of members from when we went to our redistricting ten years ago, which is all know about the census, I hope you understand it. So, after all this is said and done, sometime about February, we're going to start getting some paperwork from the state, and we're going to sit down and redistrict. We're going to have to allocate the numbers of voters, citizens, lives in that area, and I think last time, some gained, some lost. We don't have that data yet, but what I'm putting on the agenda is we need to start a redistricting committee, although we have quite a few committees, and, uh, my motion will be come Monday night, we'll start a five-member, one from each district, committee, and be prepared to start getting ready for the training, bring back to the commission.
Sure, if you don't mind.
Yes.
What I'd like to see, and, and I've reviewed one particular, but I think that the commissioners in, in those specific districts get together and select the one that they want to represent on this committee. That way, uh. But even when it's important, in council, that we got, the commission has to vote, nobody else has a vote cast, it's left entirely to this body. Johnny's went through it, I think, a few others, Scott may have still been there when we went through the first, we all listened, and it's a big fight, and, you know, people's going to be made mad when they took out a bid and put in another, but there's no other choice, we have to kind of outline, uh, that's the. It might be one of those deals that we want to look at more business, you know, we might have guidance to stake, we'll get to that, but more district, less commission, per district, you know, we got to keep it usually an odd number, but that's why I'm going to bring that, I want to talk about it in this, maybe bring the information back to the commission, question, and those up or down, if that's time, you'll probably look at a made term to do office. In saying that, you want to try to put the committee together next week, I'd like to have the representative of each district, and that's possible next week, so we're going to vote, give you in and prove it, that they're, they're getting together like the chairman. Scotty?
Mr. Chairman, that being said, to add to, uh, Commissioner's, uh, Ork's, uh, what he's talking with, whoever, and I know this has been an issue with the fellow constituents with, whoever will serve on this committee, Mr. Ork, I'm not for favoritism of who's going to get what in what district, I think every district, when we do this, reassignment of this, it, it's going to have to be fair, and it's going to have to be, the whole body has got to look at this and make sure we make a very sound decision, and don't, you know, not be partial to, to, I'm just talking now, don't be partial just to one particular area, I'll take this, okay, this is going to be in the fifth week. I'm just talking now, don't be partial just to one particular area, I'll take this, okay, this is going to be in the thick of it politically, that, that's just not the way it works. I just want to make sure that, that we all are understanding, uh, this.
Uh, Mr. Or, you don't want to? No, go ahead. Uh, on the redistricting process, it goes by numbers and it means, for example, we try to balance out all districts number wise, so therefore, hey, uh?
Mr. Chairman, we'll have, Mr. Or, maybe you guys can help me with this too, uh, on the state level, that do we get, we'll get the numbers, uh, in each district, is that right, Mr. Or, of the?
You'll get the numbers in a block.
Yeah, you'll have.
There'll be a block of people, for example, the Davis Chapel community, then the Cooley's community, they'll all be in a block.
We'll have Campbell County and then we'll have little blocks in each district that fills up that district and you could move a block, say, for instance, the fifth district has lost two hundred people. They've not, and everybody else stayed the same, so we've got to fill that in, that gap, so you don't want to reach in the middle of the fifth district to jump out and say, well, well, let's pack that, let's, we'll reach over to LaFollette, the town's little section, and we'll give it to jump to the fifth district there, we wouldn't be fair. So you want to keep it where it's closed, where they don't have to drive, the first district, the way it's set up, it has been for years, covers all the way. Quidd, Zach, and all of them, they campaigned, they have to go, and if they have a person that no one's to talk to about a problem, they have to drive to the second, the third district to get to the first.
Well, first district, second district.
So, I mean, in time, as it grows, supposedly everything heats out, we don't have to do much to, uh, but you never know, but the state will send us a this, and that committee will end up with that this. And it, it's no information that's, that's hid, it's just sitting there and it tells how many's in those little blocks.
My concern, Mr. Or, is, thank you, Mr. Chairman, my concern is, is simple and, and I, I'm, I'm basically taking this on as a, uh, as the voters in, in each district of the county. Of course, I'm glad I know, you know, some of the people in all of the counties, so I ain't really worried about me, I mean, I can hop along the campaign and I love that, I love it. But anyway, what I'm saying here is, it should be fairly, equally divided, you know, that's what I'm saying, Mr. Chairman, I, I know, because I don't want no, I don't want any, I think if I was, one commission shouldn't be able to be partial to.
That's why there's five commissioners on each district.
All right, I appreciate it, I just want to.
Yeah, Scott, it's going to be, we're going to bring it back to the commission and say, this is what we've come up with, we, we said last time, I don't know if you remember, and I was like, no, I don't like that. Let's move this over here and say, well, you know, we tried, none of it worked out, some moved, some strengthened up, some did, but it's left to the commission as a whole to vote it in and vote it out, it's got to be voted on and redistricted.
Yeah.
I don't know really what to do till we get that information, but at least we'll get started and the people that's on this committee can start actually taking some classes and learning. The state said they would come in, we need to, they'd sit down and educate us as much as possible and even help us all the way through the process. So, but the biggest thing is, first thing they said the other day, get your committee started, and they, and I wasn't on the committee last time. I'd like to serve on the committee, I don't know if Duane or Scott wants to serve, but I'd like to serve, you know, so we're going to have to work that out between this, before Monday night, but that's all we're going to do right now, it may be a month before we have a meeting.
Okay, uh, John, turn over your.
Just very briefly, this, this whole subject that you're talking about goes back to a Supreme Court ruling based Baker versus Carr, which established the principle of one man, one vote. That, that each person's vote is supposed to count as much as, as somebody else's. And there was case law which basically said, you try to get these districts within five percent, the five percent rule is what it's called. You'll never get them perfect, but they're supposed to be within five percent to make sure that one's person's vote counts as much as the other one, that's what the, the goal is.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Scotty, did I answer your question?
Yeah, I, I, I just want to say one more time, I want to emphasize to this whole commission that commit, you know, I, I want everybody to get involved with this, this process.
I'm just kidding, I think that everyone will be involved in, 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 in the.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Rest of the chair. Okay, I'm sorry, Zach here.
I just wanted to make a comment, hopefully, of Mr. Kidd's comments, um, I still confident that this commission will get a rap because if we don't, like anything else, which we're trying to do right now, it is such a good initiative.
He did.
Thank you.
And the state's going to have to prove anything that we do, we can't just go in and make a fiasco out of it. Uh, and this was, if, if I was actually looking, researching last week, it's funny, the reason we got these, uh, election districts that we just went through the president's race with, is because of some lawsuits that were set forth years ago. Because, you know, you have electoral votes, it's not all come in place, I think it was in the early nineteen hundreds, I think, it was because of lawsuit, it came out of Shelby County, I don't know if I'm mistaken, uh, in TSC. So, you know, TSC gets a lot of things right sometimes, and I think we, I, and I can applaud our election commission in Campbell County, I think they did an awesome job. I, I do, I feel that they did a great job, we don't hear the bad news on TSC right now, do we?
No.
Because we keep, we keep hands up, and I think the same way, this, Scott, and that's not to take nothing away from nobody, every one of us are on the same level, there's not a big chief and little chief, they're all the same. You want to have a voice to speak against it or board, when we getting ready to do it, it's not to leave nobody out, you know, but that's all I have, Johnny, as we move on.
Okay, but in saying that, um, Rust is correct, I've served on it twice, okay, and what we've done, we've come to Plan A, Plan B, Plan C. Everybody has an opportunity to look at it and you, uh, you vote for the one that you feel is, is comfortable to you and is divided equally. And like I said, the geographical areas are not going to change a lot, it's going to do with the population.
What I feel about it, Mr. Chairman, really, right down to it, whether I'm on that board or not, if they take from me, give from me, it don't matter, man, I love it anyway.
Thanks, Scotty.
I don't think, and that's my personal opinion, I don't think, Scotty, I think that you're actually.
You told me I had to lose the little, I thought.
I think that first, the first, second, third, and fourth district, actually gained, or gained people, mostly the fourth and third. But the fifth district, if you look at the students, the population of students went down, then they lost, so that means they're going to have to grow in size, you know, but we don't want to take the seat of LaFollette, the area that me and you kind of served. And give it to the fifth district and they can come all over the seat of LaFollette.
I love that name.
No, they would, they would, they would fight that too, they may.
I commend, I, I'll say to him, I commend you, I commend you to explain what you did, I, I appreciate that, my name is.
All right, Mayor, do you rest his portion? Okay, you will be bringing that?
I will.
All right, in the meantime, in the meantime, commissioners, please, get with your other commissioners in your district and, uh, have us a name for next Monday night. Uh, Susan, I'm here, Zach, you have four.
Okay, I've got several names, so.
What?
Okay, um, so, I'll tell you what's going on. Okay, number one, I'm a critical of those objectives, rules, mandates, sets of barriers, education, and, um, also I've got a resolution I'm asking for two strong votes, not just.
Now, you understand a strong vote can change?
Yes, but I, you're right.
Got you. Okay.
Number one is, is a clear rule of resolution encouraging the public, I've included resolution with county commissioners, county officials, and management, county chiefs, and managers. I want to know if you all want to include, you hear me? I want to know if you all, I want to know if you all want it to say public or if you all want to encourage county commissioners and county officials, you all tell me.
My personal opinion, I think, uh, I would go to the public, more people involved. That's, that's my opinion.
I feel like one too.
I mean, way more on that one, if you all are good with me without having to take it back to.
What is, what is saying, Ralph, is on this, um, Tennessee?
Ten, Tennessee Chiefs.
Tennessee Chiefs, it's basically been a mentor, okay, to high school students.
It's with Tennessee.
And, uh, it was, it, right now, Zach is originally a elected official, it's for to go to just the general public, yeah, I'll give you the general public. What do you all?
The approval of a place for community board, this is a print article on ethics, it is on your, uh, page four in your packet. Yes. Yes, okay, this is a form, a, a, it's going to be to offset the agenda for community meetings. And basically you need to fill it out, depending on the agenda for a community meeting, have a committee to pick up, the privilege, that's why it's a four. And so I ask you three questions down here, and basically you're supposed to provide, um, pertinent documents regarding the matter, including a funding source, uh, or you're going to email pertinent documents and you're going to, which committee it's supposed to be directed to. And you're going to see you sign it, um, stating that you will be at a community meeting.
Okay, this is not for the committee, except it's just if you would like to have something added to it for anybody.
Yes.
Got you.
Thank you.
Not necessarily a resolution, if you want, if you have something one committee to look at, that's why this is for.
Okay, Ralph, uh, I need about twenty of these. Well, we all need some copies for next week, but, so, and I've been done, uh, going on over here and just getting that.
I got you, Dad. Uh, Mayor, do you have a mandate to run a sop of like ten copies to each commissioner? Ten, you just don't use them good enough.
Just to try to.
Guys, we'll tell you something, and I know we're getting off subject a little bit, but Zach, I think in, in that rules and ethics meeting that you guys, that you all system, good guidelines and procedures, the thing is, we need to stay on task and policy.
The only thing that we discussed is with Zach back on the period, you know, just because we left something, we didn't put something down as paper, you still talk about it. But it's just, you know, stuff comes up, you can plan this meeting five days in advance, and you pretty much kind of leave it out, other things, other matters. And something may happen at sanitation with the truck, you have, may have to look at it, so this is mostly just a guide, because once you get into meeting, things may be added to this.
Well, the thing that I like about it, Rusty, and I read your office minutes, if I think correct, is the fact that once those come out of the committee, they come to the full commission, we can actually speed up time. Not spend thirty minutes on doing such, coming in, and if Ralph has something, he reads it to me, tells me that it's passed by his committee, and he makes the motion, which can be passed, and I'll take a second. And, you know, and we might entertain a couple of questions, and it may be to belong, because, hey, the commissioners are going to have it a week or so in advance.
It's going to be the opportunity that kind of, that man that we've been sending out to minutes, to the meetings, that what we did, so you're not coming here blind, Scott. You know, kind of, whether I need to come to the meeting or not, we know what's going on during the meeting.
I'm going to walk up now.
Mary, you tell me, it's good.
Okay, yes, make sure you have.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Zach, go ahead.
And then, let's see.
Your new website, you can put in what you want.
Right, and then also, approval to, again, for a ten of the commission rules on operating the procedures, and this is to clarify the town knowledge committees on the need. And then, if you don't think it's been seven in packet, what I have, um, the top one is proof by rules and ethics made. The bottom one, um, it's a slight change, I'd like to have a slight change because it gives, you know, a bit more time to get off the minutes. If that's fine, then, then you all want to get all of them.
Could you read that real quick?
The bottom one?
Yes, please.
The commission's advocate, the other party can't give the minutes of the community meeting, shall prepare such meeting minutes, provide a copy of such meeting minutes on the given initial support information. County commissioners, letters office, county attorney, county clerk's office, county attorney, the county manager. Their practices will take account of the managers generally at times in business state or completely, which is a space instance of what is on the county committee. For example, in desert, no four committee meetings, all meetings during the committee meeting should be sent out in four business states. All minutes of meetings occurring in the social network set, Monday and Thursday, generally be sent out on Friday, fourth, second, and then technically not, so I will object to minutes, Friday and Wednesday. Other than the meeting, the budget, clients, committee, his memberships, who has an entire membership of the county commission, all other county commission, all other, all meetings. Rest of current, all later than Thursday, fourth, second, Monday, Monday, which is the day of the commission workshop, the additional nine eleven two committee meetings can be scheduled, the thirty eight, fourth, second, Monday.
I think that's going to take.
If you know, per page eighty-eight, I've made sure all the chart, it's going to access, exactly what it's going to do. And so you say, like, we use several things, so, so the workshop, the next one, this is in the fourteen, the commission meeting, this is in the first. That is, at the deadline, we have committee meeting, if you want to show the petition, this is under hand from the deadline, coming, this is under forward, the couple of notes. How any action taken after the period, the number of deadlines, the committee meetings each month, will not be loaded on that county mission, we'll call it, such a question, comments made. We're calling that section of the comments, maybe. Um, if you need to use a, not a, but a, what property is on the, yes, this is social forces, and then and other technical reasons, I don't know.
Again, I want to commend you and your committee. I think these were fantastic. I think this is the biggest thing, please understand that, is that we follow these rules and, God, if we follow these, it'll, it'll speed the process up so much.
It gives you a chance, because if you come in here right before the commission, you have a committee meeting, and then everybody tries to absorb that information, it's almost impossible. We talked about that back years ago, we started talking about it, and, you know, and sometimes they're going to be exceptional to the rules. Keep going back to that stuff, it's going to come back real important. We're going to have to find it before the commission, you know, have it with me. It shouldn't be every month, you shouldn't call, and I'd look world's worst to have a thirty minute meeting and try to do something.
That'd be two errors sometimes.
Yeah, because sometimes it takes a while to get everything through. Thirty minute meeting, sometimes people say, hey, and that's it, we leave. So Zach did a good job on that, but understand that you can't bring something, bring it in here, and bring it in here. Now you could spin rules, the commission has to spin.
Well, you know, I go back to Cliff, remember Cliff was here? Cliff would not vote for any, to suspend the rules for anybody, if it wasn't. One time, I, hey, I don't remember that, but I do remember that. But it said that, hey, I understand where the rules is coming from, I really do. And like you said, unless it's an absolute emergency that we suspend the rules to pass something, then I say move it to the next month.
Well, nobody wants to lose money. Or grants or something.
Sometimes there's time for it, you know? Sometimes we went through this pandemic, we had months. We had our first meeting, face to face, I think was everyone get out, probably.
Hey, listen.
It came up. No, Rusty, we're just glad to see each other, we wouldn't want to put a house.
It's terrible.
Just seconds, Scotty. But in saying that, Rusty, and I agree with you, we, hey, was it last month that we suspended the rules about ten times? We not, it was a bunch. We don't need to done, we really don't.
I think it's rings behind it. I mean, we, we did a lot of stuff, I don't know any time to get, take, break, and get it.
And you mentioned grants. We should be.
Well, we should know grants coming down.
And, and, and have it, and have it in time, you know, and stuff and everything to get passed. Zach, anything else, I'm sorry?
A couple things, continuation of those objectives, going to be, that's one of those, and it turned off. Infrastructure, I forgot to run back to the, so it's trapped around. And then the infrastructure agreement, letter to hold ten more support grant meeting in March twenty twenty-one. Any objection has combined before the infrastructure committee has been before the court. This explodes minutes from the sheriff's condition. Also, I'd love to start being employed, because we're still on some, there's a chance that we may have all this for dead. Now, the other things are not trying to make you all aware of, they're not, they're not, okay? On my one night, legislative repairs, I'll send you all an email if you have anything which you want to improve. Please send that to me by next Monday. I'm working on making, I'll give any, the given hours. My house looking like January six, that's the date of offer, I said it's, I said that that's the date of offers, that's what we're going with for right now. Also, infrastructure plan, I've heard you also retain, all of those are on there, or you screen there. I don't look at, they're using the size, but if we have to, we might have to, yeah, then we all fit them on there.
Zach, if you don't mind me saying that, and I agree with you, I think the mission did be there, but I think we need to set some type of policy that if you miss two in a row, we're going to bump you off.
Your whole speech said, after thirty-three seventy.
Okay, there you go.
I'll definitely be there.
Okay, two other, or one other thing. Next week, we have one commission, you need to figure out, and you can let us know this sooner. Hold on, I have to dial the power of my head phone. You all need to have done the appointment that commission will have done for the meetings. And the trial management, just get the soundings, they're calling, I must be the sound too. And then also, I have an idea, and going out of park, I'll go to this. I would ask, I think we should put that person on the neck, and ask him to come in next year, because we didn't have.
Just call on one of them this year.
Now, he was, I believe so, but he was on, he was on his past year, but there's one thing you can probably tell, which part, it's four nights, six weeks.
He was in economic school.
Yes, sir.
I found that. Okay, I was going to. Just say, just say. I was got it. Okay. Okay, is that all, Zach?
Yes.
Again, I want to thank you and your committee, because I think by doing what you guys have set aside, you should have us be processed. Now, Lisa Lester. Lisa's not here. Butch. Mr. Kidd, you have a call.
I was going to say that, I, I'd have to say that Commissioner Marlowe has done a great job on that, and I serve on it well, and I think it's going to do real well, and I think he needs to be commended for that, Mr. Turner. Okay, guys, I'll be very short. I want to speak to the mayor.
Scotty, before you do that, do you have anything to add as a budget item, or is it not?
No, sir, not at this time.
So this was just, this, no, I need to know tonight, you going to add something?
No, I'm not going to add anything, sir.
Okay, so you're going to do.
Just write it, yeah. Mayor, I don't, we, we all know that this pandemic is, is getting a little bit more serious now as time goes along. I think there's sixteen tests in, in our county now. And, you know, it, it's sad for the families, you know, and I even got people that, you know, that I was close to that passed away as well, and I think it's affected everybody in the county. My job as a county commissioner, representing the second district and also representing Campbell County as a whole, peoples, and I'm sad to say, I'm still in the public a lot, even yet, you know, and people talk to me about these issues, you know, pertaining this, you know, and they always, it always comes actually back to, to me talking to you about this, the pandemic. I'm wondering what, and, you know, of course, you know, I'm not going to say anything negative, whether the president's right, but it's possible we, you know, we've got a new administration as, you know, and the president, you know. What, what is your intentions as a, as a county mayor? Look, you know, looking in and looking out, what are you, what are you, what are your, what are your goals and objectives for this? You know, and I, I wanted to hear what you have to say, because this is a pretty, you know, you got your media here tonight. You know, I think, I think they need to, you know, hear from you to, you know, especially, you know, where coverage don't get to, you know, to, to some homes, and somebody tunes in with volunteer time, WLF, and et cetera. What, what, can you give us a little update, please?
Sure. I mean, there's really only one timeline of this pandemic, and that's the timeline to get to a vaccine. But we have injected gatherings of different sorts into that timeline, and that's what we're fighting right now. I just left the funeral this afternoon for a friend, Bird and Burger Ford, this afternoon. We've lost my church, like a whole lot of churches have. It's brutal. We have a chance to mitigate it if you wear masks, and it's mask wearing season in Campbell County until the end of twenty twenty and maybe beyond. Issued that proclamation, and WBIR covered it, press covered, WLF covered it, the governor called, had a good discussion with him about it, and so we mitigate in every, every way. Reduce gatherings as much as you can. We need to continue to look at our meetings and make sure that it's worth it, to come together every time. But mask wearing is the best opportunity that you got on a personal basis to stop that thing from coming out of you and hitting somebody else. We had a drive-through clinic in Angelico High School, that's two that we've had from state, and we had somewhere between twenty-six and thirty. I was there for a final count on Saturday morning from nine to twelve. So we are mobilizing resources and we're prepared to mobilize more. Our hospitals are being challenged across the state, but our hospitals locally have been able to beat the path. So that's really your key indicator. When your hospitals get overrun, you're behind. So far, our hospitals in the county, handy ability to transfer out, have been holding. But it's, it's really one timeline, and that's timeline to the vaccine. I do think we need to put our eyes on the problem, but also on the horizon. The epidemic of nineteen eighteen was the epidemic of nineteen eighteen, not nineteen nineteen, not nineteen twenty. It ended. There's going to be the end of this thing, some point due to the thing changes and dies, or we get a vaccine, we get immunity across society. So we got to get to that point, we're within a few months of that, but we're not there yet. And it, it's a painful trip, it's a painful journey, but I, I do think people, Campbell County is bonded, bonded well. I questioned the, the choice to go back to school, but I'll commend our faculty. Our schools have single digits of active cases among students. Now, the virus can move from student to student, host to host, but because those children have their shots, they're growing, their bodies are, are stronger against this thing than an adult, certainly an older adult. And so the virus does move from student to student, but it's the after-school activities it's causing to transfer to the adult population. So adults have to be very judicious about, about where they spend their time, how often they congregate. And, you know, our churches are doing parking lot church with FM transmitters, or Facebook Live, or telephone call systems, and I encourage everyone, every congregation to consider those alternatives as well. But our health department is responding and responding very well. I, I've been telling people to, if you have symptoms, go get your post-free test, call, you know, five six two eight three five one, schedule for a post-free test. If you don't have symptoms, but you think you come in contact with somebody, you can still call that number and go check. So it's no cost to you, and right now, there's no real threat to use up the tests that we have. So everybody, we have availability, so use that health department and, and reduce your trips and reduce your exposure, adult-to-adult contact certainly, but adult-to-children contact can still be, can still be a liability. I think the last five days, what we're seeing is the insistence of some people who wanted to go out and have Halloween, even though many of these events were canceled. Some folks still went out there and hit the neighborhoods, and, you know, I, I talked for a month asking folks to consider alternative events in the home as opposed to going door knocking, but now we're seeing, you know, we dropped down to, we peaked at two eighty-eight, we dropped down to one thirty-four two weeks ago, or a week ago. Now we're back up to one fifty-five today, so that's your Halloween bump. So think about things like Thanksgiving and Christmas, and how you're going to observe it this year. And remember, the epidemic of nineteen eighteen was not the epidemic of nineteen nineteen. We are going to get to the solution on this, we just have to persevere and mitigate until we get there.
Yeah, okay. Now, that being said, you did real well not having a teleprompter, by the way. That being.
Bringing good stuff every day.
That, that being said, Mayor, and I also want to recognize the LaFollette Press too, I apologize for that. Mayor, we're in the crucial months right now, as you're aware. My question is pretty simple, a lot of people have brought this to my attention as well. Have you thought about reaching out to the city mayors and coming up with a game plan where you all could work together and, and try to help this pandemic? That's a very important question.
I'm going to give you questions with the city.
I understand communication.
Health department is really the only resource local government have, and, and they know that they've got access to me twenty-four seven.
But have you, have you actually, I know, I know the answer that you're wanting us to answer. But what I, my, my question is to you, have you physically reached out to, to the city mayors and maybe coming up with a, some kind of game plan? Right now, it's very crucial, Mayor, it is very bad, you know?
That's how we got the clinic in Angelico, talking with Mayor Osborne, he told, he told me he really wanted to leave it, and they were going to get the governor and introduce it. The health department themselves had the drive-through clinic here at Jack for Middle School in response to our question.
Well, can you, can you do this, can you, and I'm not being hard, I, I promise you my heart and mind, because I'm, I'm taking this very serious myself, okay? I've got loved ones that's, that's affected by this as well. And my question to you is this, can you commit to this commission that you'll reach out personally and you all come up with something that you can bring back next month to this commission to show us that you're, you're moving forward with your city mayors?
I, I am going to continue to do what I have to, stay in contact with them. I don't know that there is a plan, if you have some idea.
What if, what if, what if, what if? And what if sometimes is a, a, a big task, you know? My, my question to you is, what if, you know, I can't do it myself, these are all my constituents, I, I've got to have help with them, and I know they care about it just as much as I do, okay? They're in this game just as much as I am, and they care about the county as well. What about if, if, you know, we, you know, committed to some maybe masks and, I, I need, I need, I'm saying this, and please don't take it personally, because I don't want you to do that, what about if we, you know, come up with, you know, a possibility, you know, maybe, I'm saying fifty thousand masks or thirty, forty thousand masks, would you be able to produce those, could you, could you move forward with that?
I think we can access about five thousand right now, but you are.
Okay, so, so you're saying to this body here that if we committed to you at between thirty to fifty thousand masks, you, you, you as a county mayor, that you will see that these get distributed the way they're supposed to, and show proof to us that you can do that?
I don't have a funding line to buy them if you want appropriate.
That's, I think, I think I'll talk to you about that, Mr. Chairman, if that's correct. So, so that's the only way, we're, as this, as a, if I was in your shoes, and I had this kind of, you know, I would probably seek all options I could to get this pandemic and show the public that, you know, hey, you already doing a great job. I'm not saying it, but right now, these months that we're in, all the way till February or March, my understanding, if I ain't mistaken, I think Mr. Workit brought this up, it, it don't make many if it's ninety percent, this thing ain't going to, if, if, we're talking, they said maybe in the fall of the summer of the year, next year. So we got to get a, a gas point right now, and that, that's all I'm asking you. Can you commit to this body that you'll personally come back in, in December, December, and show us where you have, have spoken to the, the city mayors of this county?
I've spoken to them all.
Oh, no, I mean, make it some kind of, some kind of.
I think you can coordinate what I'm on COVID issue.
Scotty, I understand, I think that the mayor would go ahead and, he said.
All right, I'm, I'm not trying to be hard, I'm not, I just want to, you know, see if you can.
If you want a specific purchase, there is no additional dollars, you're going to have to appropriate for this program.
The way you're going to comment on Scotty's question?
Yeah. Mayor, I, I think you're doing a good job, I mean, I don't know what else you could do, I don't know what you're doing. But Scotty, as far as masks go, people are going to wear it, you can distribute all the masks you want, that'll, they're going to wear them. So, I mean, I don't know where you're going with this, but we, I mean, they can do it all in a can.
I, I didn't say that, I'm just saying, I come up with some things too that would help this pandemic. In, in our county.
Well, in, in saying that, Scotty, I understand your question. Mayor, will you report back to us next Monday that you have talked to the city mayors and stuff and everything, and, you know, run that ideal by, and, and see, see what place that, and then report back to us. Is that your answer, Kidd?
Yeah.
You finished?
Yeah, I got one more thing for you. Can you give the, the people that like saying that I can't get the internet and all that, and, you know, since the media's here, can you give us an update on T-Dot, how the rub, if everything's going on, T-Dot?
Oh, Easton will follow it all the way to the county line, you've got the biggest construction project here beside the I-75 construction project under full motion, so you're going to, you're going to see a lot of excavation between now and real cold weather, and then probably a slower tempo through real cold months, or then by spring, you'll be seeing that additional length.
Thank you, Mr. And, and to answer, to answer Mr. Commissioner Bear's, you know, I, I like it. I'm doing what my people in my district are asking me to do. And this pandemic is a pretty serious thing, this is the most serious thing since nineteen nineteen or nineteen twenty, and that's why I'm going to continue to do what the people in my district tell me to do, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kidd. Uh, Tyler? Eege?
Yes. This past week, we had a airport meeting meeting, I heard the Tom Snyder Airport, there was several go, um, chambers that we didn't own. So I'll go ahead and, since Mr. Snacko is not here tonight, I'm the vice chairman, I'm going to put that on my report for next month.
Okay, Amanda's got those minutes to step out.
And, next up, said the board on committee meeting for next Monday, five thirty.
Okay, so you want a water line extension meeting, committee meeting for next Monday at five o'clock? Now, you have that? Mayor? You have a question on that?
If one of you done, I've got mine.
Okay, go ahead.
I believe this one's in Hawaii, yes, Hawaii now for setting, great meeting.
Got a long idea, man.
Mayor, you have more?
Robert, do you have the furniture issue worked through yet for the airport? Will that be part of what we do Monday?
I, I think, I've been over with Mr. Morrow, and I think he's got a delusion of wanting to get a resolution.
Next month?
You're not mistaken, I thought we sent that to you. Do you have any information on that?
I'll take one. He's going to get his process again, he's going to find out what he's going to house, and he's going to come fill out the paperwork, same paperwork, one of these forms, and he's going to fill it out. What he's buying, how much he's going to buy, he's going to change the, how he's going to bring the buildings to grounds, and we're going to blow down it, or it down, and bring it back to the fourth committee next month, maybe next month. Maybe next month, we'll go do it, just like, you know.
I think, I figured it'd probably be January, February.
But he, he said, he was gonna try to have it done for December, and, uh, that was, you know, you can't hold on to prices, don't know how much it's gonna be.
I thought we had him talk about, so.
We're down with that, your question?
Yeah, the house is gonna go some checkings, and it's gonna, out here, gonna, maybe another, we're just gonna-
Okay, uh, Wink's not here. Randy, you have a call?
Since we're talking about the airport meeting, and that meeting, uh, is also discussed for replacing the tenant tile at the airport, and they're gonna buy the tile themselves, and he's gonna work it in and replace the tile so we don't have to have a resolution or anything like that. Tony's gonna do buildings and grounds, and replace it. Uh, there was a, also, mention after the meeting, a sign they're going in, run it back to the secretary of that, open up a new sign.
So there's no resolution on this?
Just, just, that's, that's, that's up here on that. And then on the, uh, drop box for the veterans affairs, uh, where Kevin gets back, he's at hospital, and I, I think he's still in option, but he gets back to his office. We're gonna, Tony's gonna install, Kevin wants a mailbox drop box in the mile on the outside of the drop thru there, drop off, and it is us. So we'll have access to it from here. So we're not gonna do the 600 dollar, one of them, it's gonna be about 800, 900. Tony's gonna style it, accept the drop off. You know, we're gonna let him put in drop boxes on the outside of the street. So we changed it, voted on the committee.
So you're gonna end that as a, as a resolution?
Right, we'll vote on it, prove that we changed it to, uh, a mailbox box instead of a drop box on the street.
Instead of the free snack?
Yes, so it'd be in the wall, just raise that up again.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman? Okay, I wanna make sure that credit gets due where credit is, Mr. Davis. Uh, Mr. Ork had mentioned the, uh, sign out to the airport, then I sent it to you. I wanna make sure that we're aware of that. As far as the sign, uh, the, uh, box at the veterans, I did speak, Mr. Chairman, I also to Kevin Waller myself, and he did, uh, make recognition that he wanted the, uh, drop box on the side, past the, uh, one of the driver's licenses, so I just wanna make sure we're understanding that.
Okay, good.
I'm going to, be making a motion to abolish the resolution 2020, 921, that's a resolution that I brought before you all the ninth month. That would be 15 people, 200, 500, and 1,000. We've got a veteran resolution already intact that will cost them 3,000 instead of this, so I'm, the law's no good, so we're gonna abolish it. That's it, that resolution. I'm going to dispatch this group, take it back off the record. Anybody have any questions? All right. Uh, going to accept the, uh, design. Y'all should have a copy, if anybody asked about, you know what we're talking about, of the new building for the sheriff's office. I have, uh, signed documents from clerk's office, Allen, and from the sheriff's office, that they are accepting and willing to be a one custody, custody of the work in this, and the sheriff's office. So all the paperwork has been done and signed, and they all three agreed, and then put it out for bid. We're gonna be voting to put it out for bid, through buildings and grounds. It's a building, and it's, that's where the vote come through, you all, through buildings and grounds, to put the job out for bid. Yes, sir.
Uh, can I direct you?
Yes, sir.
Is it, it's not a schematic design, is it?
It's more, it's, what's this, it's just the, the sand bricks, we call it, just, yeah.
The outside, I wanna come look at. Well, that's still, uh, I guess that's gonna have to be approved, go ahead, let MBI do the sign.
And, and, well, they've been rolling up, it's already dropped, blueprints dropped up.
Really?
Yes, it's ready to go, get it.
Okay.
Yeah, but, uh, they've changed architect drawings and, you know, so it's, it's ready for bid.
So that, a schematic design is raw, yes?
That's, I understand, it's ready for bid, yes, sir.
What's, what's your name of the position?
I, I, I was told it couldn't take, once it's put out for bid, at least six months. We get the vote, voted, bid it out, clean down the first of the year, you know, it takes time. Then get a contract, that takes months to get a contract, so you're looking midsummer before the job's completed, you know, somewhere around there, so.
I expect that.
Correct, yes, sir. And, and for the public, don't know, this building is gonna have two drop-throughs in it, for the clerk's office and trustee's office, one on each end, that, if, you know, hindsight's funny, funny. And it's courthouse of worst paper, had it get shut down, it wouldn't be shut down that far. It's open, the public can still come and go, and, and, uh, business as usual. And, you know, it's, if we built this last year, we've been hurt. So we can look back at one thing, that this has been delayed from the, God knows what he's done, or that we do enough. So it was put out for bid, it was too high, now we're redoing it, we got the money. So it's gonna be fit the county a whole lot more, so, but.
You know, Ralph was saying that you're going to introduce a resolution, let the building grounds committee go ahead and put this out for bid?
We done, buildings and grounds has already made it, and already approved it, 5, 5-0, that it be put out for bid.
That's all.
That's it, so it's ready to go. We still went through the grounds, all, like I said, uh, it went through the Joe committee, and it came to buildings and grounds, and now we're voting Joe.
One thing, Ralph, that actually, that I was amazed by, because we look at this, we know at one time, 600 and some thousand, probably half of the state of Fordville, wasn't gonna be enough. So you look at what size of building that is, the space, two drive-throughs, all the infrastructure put in place, and we're all gonna have about 325,000 in the game, state's being arrested more late for this blessing with COVID-19, 90, and, and with Robbie's Fordville. So we're gonna get a good, looks like, a good facility that is needed. Because the one up there at, uh, at the back building, I don't know, was shut down for about a week or so because of the code. You couldn't even get in, you could not get in any day, get your pass. I don't know if you worked up there or not, Tyler, but it was awful. I mean, I made three trips one day, and I said, I give up, I face it. So to add another drive-through at Jacksonville, I think it's gonna be, regardless of the code, it's gonna be revised. The clerk's office, and then Monty has trouble. I bet somebody told me today, they went to pay theirs.
I did.
People, it was cute.
I paid mine.
And there was people backed up, they were all that on the sidewalk, all the way to the mayor's office. So that's gonna make people more efficient. I think the public and guards is moving on life. Go, Joe.
I think one thing about speed, but, again, the building, all the infrastructure is already there, you know? Great work, everybody's, they're kind of late, not a name.
Okay. Uh, Ralph, one more thing that I don't think we know, too, this building, the sheriff and them can, can put on trains, and that, and, and they make money off of that. So when they put trains for other counties, we'll come in here, and Capitol County will train them, and they'll train different, you know, so, uh, the county's gonna get some of their money back, basically. So, uh, it's just a, it's just one of the things you need to think about, it's a, you know, it's just gonna be great for this county. And, uh-
Big plus?
Yes, big plus. But, uh, that's all on that one.
We could have paid them.
Yeah.
You know, we could have had to pay them. It doesn't work that way. The only thing a lot of people don't know is the follow-up, especially cows. And I think the world has changed in our county, as far as people, you got, we've seen it if you killed, and there's more drive-through, people coming in.
Okay, Ralph, go ahead.
Drive that, do a command, so it's standing.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Now, um, the next point is, uh, we discussed it.
Sir.
Anytime the county has got a project going, we need someone to oversee. Although we've got architects and them, but you need an inside person. So the committee has chosen Sheriff Robbie Gornes and Tony Hill. They will do day-to-day, week-to-week updates, and, and, and go around and, and, and just keep an eye on the project. If it becomes a problem somewhere, they can bring it back to the committee, and we can address it as it goes. Not until it's done, but they will just be our eyes to make sure things are going to the- Robbie's gonna be the owner of the building, and Tony's our supervisor. Yes, sir.
And in saying that, Ralph, are they gonna come back to you guys on monthly basis?
Yes, they'll give us a report.
Why I ask that, I would like to commission to get an update on monthly basis.
They'll, they'll, they'll give us a weekly update, you know, if there's anything that, if there's nothing to say, there's nothing to tell you. And, but we'll, every month, if this project goes on, one of them will report to us and in writing on what, what's going on, what word they say.
Mr. Chairman, I want to add two things. Thank you, Mr. Uh, Mr. Davis, uh, this is directed to Commissioner Ork. Commissioner Ork, we were supposed to, uh, I don't know if he was gonna give us a follow-up, you know, we've had some issues with Michael Brady in the past, considering, uh, you know, Stonehard, and to- I wanna make sure that we get, we're all in the same level here, if you can give us an update on that.
I'll let Mr. Davis, he's got the formal stuff, but I actually, I think we got the follow-up the next day.
We don't wanna run into the same issues, when it could get out.
I don't care, I think it's a hammer crack, I guess, it's what he's supposed to say.
Mr. Davis, anything?
Okay, uh, Mr. Morrow has sent out emails to Stonehard and all they, I was on the phone earlier with, with Tony Hill. And it's scheduled for the 19th, was the given date, on the 19th to come and repair it. What they called the date, and said it may be a couple of days later because some of the materials had to be in. But, uh, we still got four, maybe five months before their warranty is up. Uh, it was down, wanting to make that motion to, uh, hold their bond, but we can't hold their bond until the year's up. So if it's not finished, and within the last month of the contract, they got a year, they got a year's warranty. Then if it's not done, and their bond will be revoked until it's finished. And or we'll have someone, I mean, that's the way the bond works, if they don't come back when it's over with, their, their bond will not be released until this committee votes to release 50,000 dollars. And they've not, when the year's up, if they've not done the job, we have to hire somebody with their money to fix it. And so-
They're, they're making moves.
They're making moves now, since the committee, and since we've had our meeting, and voted to, uh, it's down here for me to make a motion to hold their bond. But as me, and I don't, you know, it affected December the 1st, but we can't do that. So-
So this is information per-
This is information per, you know, that it's been talked on, and they've been working on it, and, and we've got, we've got a hard look there, and they're ready to go.
Anything else?
Yes. Now, just a quick, uh, on sanitation notes. Remember, a few months ago, we, we talked about buying the compacters, okay? Uh, since everything's going on, as far as the economy and everything, uh, I talked to the bill, and we're deciding to wait till the first of the year. We've got several projects out there that's half-done, and we're not gonna spend another dime until everything's piled up and done and finished. And then, when it's done, we're gonna put compacters. But on a short note, we're gonna have to do something with the buyers quieted, and the compacters is down the way. So if it kicks- Pardon?
Steve?
You have an embarrassment.
An embarrassment.
You kill your wife, we kill one of them. But that's, that's the, that's, that's undone, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Uh, Mr. Ork, you said you would need to add something?
I was just gonna, actually, just making a joke with Ralph.
Oh, but-
Can't just, just, everybody have one item, for a chin, I was-
Okay, uh, I'm next. Uh, guys, uh, Monday night, uh, we're going to honor Carl Douglas's family, okay? And, uh, Ralph, you and Tyler represent the 5th District, ask the two guys to do the presentation, okay?
Let me come on, it is, go. The faculty don't know.
And you, and, and again, you know, I, I can't emphasize this to my guys, you know, like, Carl Douglas is always a good man, when he's a school board member, and as a county commissioner. And I have all the respect and warmth that man has, and he's, he's truly missed. And, uh, I just think that, hey, we need to honor him in a way that he would honor us, you know? So I'll have that on there for me, and Tyler, you and Ralph, get together, Ralph?
Let me tell this about Carl Douglas, I don't wanna tell it next week. I'm not campaigning. I got this house, this happened four or five different times. And they said, Carl Douglas was this year, he said, vote for you before you vote for me. That's what, that's what Carl Douglas was saying. He, he, he told enough of me, and told enough of the county, he says, you vote for Ralph Davis, then you vote for me. If you're gonna vote for one, vote for Ralph Davis. I had several counties, that's what that man said. And I always, I mean, that's, that, that's touching.
That's Carl Douglas. But again, uh, I'll have that for my part, but I want you guys, and, and in saying that, I want the entire commission to be a part of this. This, 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 this is all of us.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, Dwayne?
Yeah, um, I don't have any budget amendments to add, but I do need to follow up Recreation Committee meeting. Uh, I was gonna say it on Monday, but since the water, waterline committee is there, uh, leading the members, I don't listen up here, Tyler, uh- Do it Tuesday? Yeah.
I'll do Tuesday, I'm on-
Do it Tuesday, okay. So we'll do it Tuesday, uh, 5:00. You want to do what?
I, it's fine. Well, hey.
Thank God.
You know, it's true, I paid last 5:00.
But we can do 6:00.
6:00 is 6:00.
Okay, you go 6:00. Yeah, okay. We'll do it at 6:00. Uh, that'll be to discuss the RV park. Um, I'll get with Amanda to see if she wants to get Miss, get on this bear, see if she wants to attend that, about the, uh, the APG and stuff, I've seen the group. Um, and then also, uh, about the field, about Long Island Park.
Anything else, sir? Okay, before we move on, I just reminded me of one thing. Guys, we need to set a ground rules and everything for our, how we're going to handle the nomination process Monday night. You know, so, uh, like I said, uh, you know, I'll make notice that we do have the vacancy. I'll ask the audience if anyone would like to be considered, Joe, to be considered. I'll give them a couple of minutes to speak to you. But in saying that, and I'll explain to them, that you have to have a commissioner in this body to nominate you, okay? Now, in, in, in saying that, once we've done that, if we have multiple nominations or whatever, and I'll let everybody speak before I accept nominations, okay? How do you just want to proceed after that? We've always done first nominated, first voted on. And the first one to get eight votes, uh, wins the seat. Is that my correct, Joe?
Yes.
Tyler, do you have that?
First nominated, first voted.
Okay, do you have the process that I have now?
They do, they can see, ask all the, um, and they have a nominee, and have county commissioner nominate, and first nominated, first voted.
Okay. And that's, you know, Joe's at the criteria.
It's be somebody that would be qualified and serve for the-
In 5th District, yes, it has to be someone from the 5th District. Uh, Dwayne, then, Zach?
Are, are we, are we, will we make a nomination? Are we letting Ralph or Tyler make the recommendation?
Uh, that's what's always been in the past, good district commissioners.
They can nominate.
They can nominate.
Anybody can nominate. That's murder.
But are we, are we, do, I mean, we're gonna take the recommendation as the 5th District Commissioner first, right?
Uh, no, we have to put it to the audience.
Well, I mean, I know that, but as far as the nomination, what we're gonna, about State District, but yeah.
Once, once all that's done, I'll say I'll accept the nominations from the 5th District.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Tyler, you sack on some sort of-
Two things. Number one, here in the camera, we're speaking, is that I'm only allowed to ask one question?
Uh, Joe?
You're, you're allowed to ask questions of, of candidates. That's in, that's within the discretion of chair.
I mean, we need to determine what we're gonna-
Okay, guys, Zach has asked that, you know, that, once we give them a couple minutes to, to speak, if we're going to be last in, we got the last in questions. I mean, except for you all, but we need to set those guys, ground rules in that.
Normally, they're gonna call me, and they're gonna talk to you, I, I've not seen one yet, and they're not interested, they call in.
Okay. Leonard? Yes, sir.
Um, well, she's, I guess the person who understands what it is, um, I just wanted to have a, a pleasure, and, 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 just maybe, I think we've already got that set and, and ready to go, do it up, Ralph?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Joe, does that meet criteria?
It does.
Okay, guys, so we've set a ground rules and everything, we know what we're going to do, okay? And, uh, so, but in saying that, one thing, are we, or are we not gonna ask questions? My personal opinion, I'm not gonna ask the question, I think I, with no individual and stuff and everything.
Or, one thing, I, and I think once the, if one commissioner's nominated somebody, they're gonna have that information, whether they're certified to be a commissioner, or, uh, and they have to be a citizen of the county, have to live in that district three year, uh, I guess they have to be a registered voter, don't they, Joe?
I don't think.
You don't think so? But they won't have to have that criteria down, so if you nominate somebody, if you don't know, you better make sure that they're willing to accept it, have a letter from them, if they're not here. I mean, we went down this trail before, be bad, you put somebody in, and they decide to take it long, I don't have a letter.
One other thing, let's have a jump in the middle, if you have a little problem, I can see past, because I have much more information, I can, I can.
Yeah, that's insane, that, Tyler, Ralph, I'd like you guys to get together, okay? And, and Tyler, because like I said, hey, it's always been customary that we go on recommendations to commissioners.
And if we don't cover the long, you can.
Yes, yes. Uh, okay, and I'd like to see you guys can report back to me, okay?
Okay.
Um, that's all I had, Dwayne's, I told you that, and yours is basically information purposes only, for the recreation committee meeting?
Well, we're, we're looking at, you know, uh, approving the, the RV plan, it's in place, and all that, just, it's the last week, so, uh, you know, next decade we'll be to approve it, and.
So you're gonna make the motion to approve the RV plan?
Yeah.
Again, if it passed.
Well, if you're having. Well, no, we're going to committee, you know, to vote on it.
If it's used tonight, you have to have it prior to then.
Well, I mean.
If rules ain't in effect, we pay some, I hope it's not.
Yeah, I understand that, but I have all the business coming December.
Yeah, yeah.
Got, it's not gonna kill us?
No. That'll be fine. Uh, Joe? Uh, Joe, can you think of anything that I have left out?
I believe you've covered it.
Okay, Mary, can you think of anything?
I need to add.
Uh, Mary, if you have a chance, with the budget resolutions, do you see problems there?
I've got nothing to add.
Mr. Chairman, I can ask you a question, please.
Yes, sir.
Uh, is it, my understanding, I'm getting a, a constituency asking, if this was your idea actually, to, uh, bring the, um, zoning to, to have one person in each district, is that correct?
Uh, no, uh.
I mean, you.
Mr. Ork and I had sat down to talk about it, and this is what we have done in, in.
In the past, yeah, 'cause I was on that, yeah, before, is that so, it's, you do, or you, you think it's better to have a, a, a member board for this, Mr. Ork?
And the reason being is, Colin, is during this COVID, you've got some commissioners that aren't gonna come, and, and it puts a strain on you when you need a commissioner, we're having the same trouble with the infrastructure committee, uh, and that's why I said, well, let's have, we'll just have a committee, but this committee can, has no authority whatsoever until this, this commission approves it. I'll think, think of those votes, and you take those votes to approve, so it's not nothing to hide, you're welcome to come, you're welcome to attend, you put your input in, out through the chairman's board, you know, I'm sure they all sit there all night, dabble, dabble about two or three different episodes, but whoever's gonna be on it, educate, get online, find out what the job duties are, and find out.
All right, Zach?
To Mr. Pitt's point, I think I heard you, you stayed through the conference, is the district thing not so?
That's exactly, that's exactly what it is.
Okay, Scotty, you finished?
Well, yeah, I'm still, this is a pretty good topic to talk about, though.
Well, maybe, what are you, what's your plans, Scotty? All commissioners be on it?
I, I think that will probably be best, I really do, and you all probably don't agree with that, because it should be fair for everybody.
We've been kind of.
I know, but, okay.
It's gonna be fair.
Everybody has to follow. Ralph, why you always kind of trying to get offensive with it? Mr. Chairman, you'll get me late, wait.
Guys.
I'm not trying to get offensive, but you've mentioned three or four times, we wanna do something illegal.
Nobody says, I didn't use that word, you did.
Commissioners?
You used that word, I didn't use that word. Did I say the word?
Guys, Scotty, I'm not gonna have you arguing.
Did I say illegal, Mr. Chairman?
I'm not gonna debate that issue with you, okay? Guys, we're going to meet next month, hey, if we, if this body chooses one or 15, it'll come from the majority of the, of the body, how they wanna have it.
It's not saying nobody, I'm sorry, I understand.
Robert, you on the floor?
Hey, boy, I was saying, I'm talking about the recreation committee, are you able to do that, love instead of duty, would you rather do it in a company?
I, I mean, I'm fine with it, I, I.
We have to bring something back for the commission.
I, I think, I think we got time.
Wow. If we do the, what line, next Tuesday, we have to, money, and we'll all switch around. Okay, Mallory, you got that, bud?
Well, that's the move for five parts.
Well, I could be, you're good, you're good, you're fine.
That is our purpose here.
I'm not gonna jump on nobody, I, I promise.
Okay, go ahead.
And, and I apologize, but that's what I said, anyway, now, are you just gonna press Nerdis Lane, and the APBs?
Yes.
And Miss Bayer?
Okay.
So you just wanna deal with that, so, TWRA, Joe Elkins is going to attend that meeting, and I think maybe the sheriff is probably up by it, too.
Robert, you on the floor?
That's all I've got.
Make that change?
Yes.
Okay, you got that, Mallory?
Yes.
Ralph, you on the floor?
Yes, Eric, just so they won't be able to come, Dave, you, you need to stay, what you're gonna discuss, and then all of it, and they're put it down, so when you come back Monday, we vote.
I did.
Uh, the RV part?
Uh.
Rules, I know the rules aren't in fact, but you know what I'm thinking about it is, we need, we need to just go ahead and abide by it anyway, because we're having a check on Monday, so it could be something that he can have his meeting on Monday, but we won't vote on it until the fall of the month. There's nothing pressing, Mr. Dwayne.
Nothing, not aware of.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, I did not use the word illegal, and I do not apologize.
Okay.
I just wanted, I wanna be fair for everybody.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pitt. All right, any other, any other comments?
Guys, I like that, good little debate right there, it's in, you're taking most to the germ.
Down the bank.
We stand the germ, that's it, even.